I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public attendance this evening?
We have the four in their signing. Public attendance.
Okay. Agenda adjustments?
There is an agenda adjustment. I would like to remove item number 10, the contact with ESG from the board meeting for tonight, please.
Yes, ma'am. Personnel and student achievement recognitions?
There is none.
Student discipline?
There is none.
Academics, alternative learning center?
Mr. Radcliffe is here to share that information.
Yes, ma'am.
It didn't expect to be that quick.
It was, wasn't it?
It was, it was. Alright, I got a little handout.
Start with that.
Thank you. Not a problem.
Sir.
Alright, so, working with the ALC, since we are starting essentially square zero, since, you know, COVID and what have you, I've spent the last few months working with other counties, with different agencies around the state, and our own staff members to figure out exactly what an ALC is for Lewis County. And I discovered that it was easier to answer first what it was not. And before I continue, Dr. Stewart, if you think of something that you need to interject, please do, because I know I've been bouncing this off of you repeatedly over the last few months. So, if I miss something, it's probably something I've already said and forgot to say this evening. Alright, the first thing is that it's not a punishment. Now, is it, could it be in response to a punishment? Of course. Could it be in response to a student who is having difficulty accepting the punishment or dealing with the normal classroom? Of course. It is also not an in-school suspension. That's why they're two very separate things. If you have an ALC and an in-school suspension, kids coming in, maybe, you know, back and forth, that just muddies the water and makes it more difficult to work with these small percentage of students that truly need the ALC. And lastly is, it's not a prison. It's not a place just to send kids where they'll just, you know, we don't have to worry about them. They're just out of the classroom. So, that leads to what an ALC is, and I'll hit that last point first. It's a temporary stop. The idea of an ALC is it's a place where a student can go to get the strategies and the supports they need to eventually go back into the classroom. If they're to the point where we're even considering an ALC, that means at that point, we have already looked at the normal discipline routes and they just didn't work. So, continuing to just do those normal things, it's not going to get us any better of a result than what we've already had. So, in this setting, this is where students would learn and practice these different strategies for success. They'd be presented by the teacher, you know, as of course, they would provide their normal lessons as well that they would get, or as close as we can, they would get if they were in a normal classroom in Lewis County schools. This is also a place where students may have access to resources that a typical student doesn't have access to, because honestly, they don't need it. These are students who need above and beyond, I know where there's been a lot of talk about PBIS, the last year or so. And when you're talking about PBIS, there are the three tiers. There's the tier one, that everybody gets. Those are some of the things they were talking about in the LSIC. There is the tier two, it's a little more focused, it catches some of the remaining kids. And there's tier three. Tier three, you know, catches just a small percentage, two, three percent of kids, that just, the tier one and two didn't catch. That's what this is for, and that's why they're going to have access to resources that typically our students wouldn't have to worry about. These can be provided from outside agencies. They could be provided by, through our own special education departments. And of course, you know, the family may have their own resources that they have in play as well, mental health or what have you. And of course, you know, we would not stop them from taking advantage of those either. So, what an ALC needs, first of all, would be the right staff. After talking to all these different groups, the balance that seems to work best is having a teacher and an aide is in the room, and they would be there at all times. And then if one does need to step out temporarily, they have that other adult that's in place that can be there responsible for those students. Now, this is the tough one. We're talking the right place. Now, the, trying to think of the best way to say this. Research states that the best place to have an ALC is close to where or as part of the environment where they're going to be returning to. That way, they're not totally separated from their environment. They would still be able to go, of course, based on each individual student and their individual needs, you know, in some ways, take part in that environment, or start to ease them out as they start to become successful. So, for example, we have a student who's been placed in the ALC, but they have a great rapport with their English teacher and they never do have any problems. Why would we remove a student from a class where they're being successful? Even if we have an excellent teacher in here, the best place for that student to get instruction would be with their regular teacher. They're the expert in that field. They're the expert in that section. It would be taking away from that student's education if we removed them from some place where they're being successful. Now, as part of that, we're also looking at the right resources. We're talking about classroom, of course, classroom furnishings, which I know that we do have some. We may be able to move things around the county to cover that. Educational resources, now with that, that would be, let's just say, the things that the student would normally get in their classroom, and then some extra support for that. So, with the educational part, the idea is that the lessons would be provided, the materials would be provided by the classroom teachers that they would have normally. That way, when they do begin that transition process, they'll be able to transition easier, because they can step right into step with the rest of their classroom. They don't have to worry about that downtime in between of getting them caught up while they're already doing something that's difficult for them, returning to an environment that they haven't been before, or haven't been in a while. And then, of course, social emotional resources, I mentioned earlier, they would need the resources, these strategies to help them be more successful in the classroom that they haven't had access to before, or haven't been able to practice. So, this is something that'd be part of the normal curriculum of an ALC. And then cooperation with the existing school staff. You know, you notice here, I didn't ask for a counselor, even though I'm sure these students could benefit from one. You know, that's not something that I think is feasible to ask for. But they would have access to one if they are placed, you know, in a building that already has a counselor. They can just add that as part of the, you know, working with another one of their students, even if they're not, you know, going through the normal class schedule. Now, what our students will need in this environment, realistic expectations. This is a tough one. And the reason this is a tough one is because oftentimes, if you have students who haven't been successful in a normal classroom, and you take them to a new place, and the goal is to teach them how to be successful, that means you're going to hit some speed bumps. That is just part and parcel for what's going to happen with these students. So, that classroom, by any necessity, will look slightly different. Things that, as the students are learning these strategies and figuring out what they can do and how they can manage their own behavior, they're going to mess up. They're going to do things that they shouldn't. Does that mean that we need to immediately discipline right away? No, these need to be more along the lines of teaching them how to deal with those moments, instead of just necessarily punishing them for those moments. And of course, I'm not saying if a kid gets in a fight, we're going to turn a blind eye, or, you know, something like that. But, you know, there are circumstances where a behavior that wouldn't be acceptable in a normal classroom may be acceptable in this setting. Consistent placement protocols. This is probably, this is probably the touchiest piece of this whole process. And that is making sure that whenever a student is placed in there, they've received all the supports they could from their regular classroom, from their regular school before they're referred, and then they would go through a process. It would be myself and the principal, and we would look at these kids, we'd look at the discipline process. We would see what's been done in the classroom. We make sure that those extra supports have been put into place and have been there for a while. Remember, this is only supposed to serve the students who we cannot reach any other way, those kids that are above and beyond. To make sure that we're able to do that, protocols need to be in place, need to be followed every single time for every single student. And those protocols would be different across the different levels. The protocols for a high school student, the requirements have got to be different than an elementary student. If we consider a longer placement for a high school student, that might make sense. They're more, you know, typically more in control, they're more understanding. As an elementary student, though, we're looking at a student who hasn't built a lot of skills, who, you know, they're getting the basics of their education every single day. The longer they're out of that classroom, the bigger detriment it could be to that student in the long term. And this one, support before, during, and after their placement. So, that support before would start with ensuring that everything that's been, could possibly have been done at the school level has already been done. Then during, of course, we would have, you know, they'd have access to counselors, they'd have access to the teachers, these extra supports I mentioned earlier, you know, with mental health or what have you, we would have those in place. And then the important one is, another important one would be after. Sometimes these students aren't given the time to kind of breathe and ease back in to where they're supposed to be. We can't just drop them in and hope for the best. We have to let them go slow, let them acclimate, we need to let them be a part of that process. That way, they communicate with us, "Hey, I'm doing really great in this class. I really just don't get along with this teacher. I don't know what to do." Okay, let's work on that. Let's see what you need to be more successful in this class. We'll slow down the process here. Other places, we'll move forward. That way, we know that we can increase their chances of going back into traditional classroom and staying in that traditional classroom. In theory, it'll eliminate the repeaters, those kids that go out for a little bit, then we just get them back in a few weeks, because, you know, they have a culture shock of moments. So, those are the broad strokes, and then we can talk brass tacks unless you guys have questions.
So, what, for the teacher that you've envisioned, what kind of background does that teacher need to have?
Ideally, special education. You know, that way, if we have a student who's placed in there, it's a special ed student, we can, you know, we know for sure that we're meeting those special education requirements. You know, they're required to have so many minutes of special ed training, if it's hard, special ed instruction. We can make sure that's done. That way, we don't have to rotate in and out multiple teachers during the day to make sure the student gets everything they need. We could always look into more advanced training. I don't think that's something that would be outside of the realm of possibility. But it's, you know, something that we'd have to find and bring to them depending on the need.
They would also have to qualify for a teaching certificate in order to be able to get the alternative certification. So, there's an alternative learning certification that they get through the state.
And do you envision one, what's the model that you're proposing? Are you envisioning perhaps one ALC? I know you were just talking about keeping as located, as close to the classroom as possible. But in order to do that, help me if I'm wrong, you'd have to take somebody from high school down here, right?
Exactly. So, that's kind of where we're getting into brass tacks territory. So, what we can fund right now, and where we think we'll get the biggest long-term bang for our buck is starting with elementary. And then we can, we have the funding now in place to do a teacher and aide for that setting. So, then we can go ahead and start that process. I mean, we could even start hiring as soon as, you know, next board meeting could be on that agenda, right? The next one? Thank you. And then we can go ahead and start doing that. Now, we do have the funding for two more positions. So, Dr. Stewart and I were talking earlier today, and we were thinking perhaps a, not a full-blown ALC yet, but one for the middle and one for high to serve as, I'm not going to say behavior specialist, because that's not the right term, that's just on job classification, but somebody who can work with the school and work with the students to provide that little bit of extra support without it being a full ALC. So, they're still getting something. Now, looking at the future, you know, because every budget, we're kind of locked in before the school year starts until the next one comes around. At that point, we could look at expanding the scope, and we'd like to have an elementary, a middle, and a high.
We also built into the levy that passed a behavior specialist, so we could utilize that person as kind of a transition person that helps our kids move from place to place.
And that transition person would do more than just wait for that moment where, okay, it's time for them to move from the ALC into the classroom. They would take time to meet with families. This is an adjustment for a family as well. And a lot of times, our families don't have the resources they need to help their students properly. So, this is a person that can work with both to kind of help the family get what they need, the students get what they need. And the other piece of that is this transition person will be able to work with the teacher of where their student is returning to. Because that's an adjustment as well. While the student's in the ALC setting, we may discover, okay, Suzie has this trigger, but if you do this, we're okay. That teacher needs to be educated about those things. That teacher needs to be aware of what makes life difficult for Suzie, and things that really, you know, make Suzie work even harder. That way, that transition person would hit all the fronts for these kids.
I have a quick question, and I don't know, Mr. Radcliffe, if it's for you or actually for, more so for Dr. Stewart. So, you're talking about stepping up with positions, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that traditionally are pretty hard to hire anyone. So, how do we go about attracting those folks in here to fill those positions? I mean, and it's not just here where they're hard to hire, it's across the state where they're hard to hire. I mean, is there any incentives that we can provide, or, I mean, how can we handle that? Because I, I mean, I know that it's important, and I appreciate the ALC 101, and I think you're really on the right track at that elementary and then up, so I appreciate it. But I just, I just want to make sure that we can be successful in bringing these folks in here, and I, I don't know how to do it, so I hope you guys.
You're just talking one elementary school, or are we talking every elementary school?
One for the elementary schools.
Do you have one picked, or anything, location, anything?
Well, that's another challenge. Peterson's packed to the gills, Jane Lu's packed to the gills, Roanoke is the same. The only one that has space is Leading Creek. And as you all know, that's quite a haul out to Leading Creek. That's going to be real tough on our elementary kids. So, that's, that's one of our herbs.
But a central location would be Robertville Land.
But then, I agree.
You're bringing elementary in, because there may be some space here. But then you're bringing elementary kids in, and you're putting them in a, you'd have to find a new. Which may not be a good idea either.
And then, yeah, exactly, and then it would make it difficult for them to start that little ease-in, ease-out process, because then we're looking at all kinds of complexities to make sure that they can actually, you know, get that little taste to get back into their classroom, and, you know, without overwhelming them, overwhelming the teacher. It's, I never said when I started this presentation, it'd be easy.
I get you, what you're saying, but it's not a reward either, what we're doing here.
No, no, no.
There's some consequences why this is happening.
Yes. The other comment that I would, that I would make, and I don't have the crystal ball, but I can read the tea leaves in Charleston pretty well. And there's some serious discussions going on among, among the legislature about, about requiring ALCs. And not necessarily every county. If you don't have one, you might vote a party. And listen, nothing's done until it passes committees and two bodies and signed by, signed by a new governor. But, but I think they're looking at it very carefully too. But I think we're on the right track. I like being able to deal with our own and then having to partner with Harrison or Rupture, or wherever we have to go. So, if we can get out ahead of them, and you know, they won't have anything in place until July 1st at the earliest, probably.
So, we could make Leading Creek work potentially, because the void would be just the.
I'm saying, I'm saying there's space out there, all the grade levels are served out there, and we can feed them, and bussing may be a little difficult, but I want to speak for Mr. Dumont, because he's not here. But, you know, that is something to be explored. Okay.
Well, and there has been some information shared with me that I've not been able to share with Mr. Radcliffe yet, that Gilmer County may be interested in working with us in ALC capacity for elementary.
Leading Creek makes sense in that regard.
Okay.
And that's just talk at this point. There's nothing final, I mean.
Yeah, they've had their own program for a few years. I don't know how, what difficulties they've had. They've kind of tight-lipped about it. So.
So, this is a question. Let's just say I'm a retired juvenile probation officer, retired school prevention resort officer. I have a bachelor's degree. I have an education degree. Is there a way to get somebody certified in that type of realm, potentially, to teach this?
Mrs. Mace?
I kept hearing talking about certification, but I could not hear the question.
If you have someone with a bachelor's degree who would be interested in alternative certification as far as alt-learning, alternative program, is there a way to get them certified to do such?
There are certain online platforms that do offer special education as a content area. And of course, the other option is to return to school as a traditional, you know, the way I got my teaching degree. And some regular universities and colleges do have online programs to become certified. So, it's the same as with any other content area, because we are so lacking for teachers. There are countless options to become a certified teacher today where there wasn't five years ago.
One more for me, and it's a hypothetical. And I don't know how you guys even answered this, but I'll ask it anyway. And I know what kind of timeframe to put on it, but I'd like to know about how many kids we're talking about from this county that would, that would be in an ALC at one time.
In my experience, you wouldn't do any more than what a special ed classroom would hold. So, we're looking at 10 or fewer?
So, it'll be capped by us, not necessarily by the behavior?
Yes. Well, and depending on, I think that's got to be fluid.
Especially because we're talking about, you know, personalities of students, which could create more problems than solutions, strength of the teacher, or just needs of the student. I mean, it kind of, it's a dance to get that exact balance.
And the reality of it is, is that even the ALC is not a fix-all. So, there are students that would not be appropriate for that classroom either.
Yeah, I didn't mention it, but what's written in my big notes is, you know, there will be some students, there are example students who are immediate threat to themselves, others of the school should not be in this setting. And it's not what it's for. We're looking, those students would be more of the expulsion track, where that would be more of that, you know, that punishment for not acting the way they're supposed to be. It's a fine balance.
So, finally, how long are we before ready to put a student that needs to be in an ALC in an ALC?
Well, we're going to ask you for permission to post those positions, because those are new. So, we're going to ask you for those at the first January meeting. We'll get those posted as soon as we have staff and we have the classroom set up, so end of January.
So, it can be done pretty quickly?
What timeframe?
Yeah, well, pending on applicants.
Right.
Posting, yes, applicants.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Who knows? But, once you know we have that, go ahead. I'll work with the special education department and some other ALCs to figure out the forms that we would follow. And then I'll train our principals on it, so they know exactly what the process is, you know, the kind of like I outlined a few minutes ago. And then we can start that process with some of those students that are in that higher level need sooner rather than later.
Okay, you say you'll have roughly 10 per class, is that what you said?
Maybe. I'd say build more than two.
No more than 10?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, how's, let's just say, the school's need, or has needs to put kids in there. How do you go about selecting which one? Do you just take some amount out of each school, up to 10? Or how, what is your plan for that?
I would start with the principal's recommendation, because they know their students better than I do. Whenever they say, "Hey, this student needs something extra we can't provide here," that'll start that process of going through, checking out exactly, you know, where the students at, what's been provided to them, and then we'll go from there. So, principals will be that first voice in the whole process. So principals will be that first voice in the whole process. Because, you know, they're going to know their kids and their situations better than I do. Because, you know, just because a kid's a behavior problem doesn't mean he's an attendance problem. So he doesn't necessarily cross my desk.
I think it would depend on the severity of the behavior as well. So some of that would bump students higher up the list than others.
You are the ALC principal, right?
I am.
So what type of, what type of timeline or how much time you would expect hypothetically speaking? If it were to go to Leading Creek, how much of your time would you expect you having to be present?
You know, it's terrible, I haven't really thought about that. I'll say not an insignificant bit, just because, you know, I do want to be a presence, I don't want to be a crutch, you know, for that teacher, because there will be times where I will simply be unavailable. If I'm out in the woods of Wildcat, you know, I'm not going to be able to come in and offer support immediately to Leading Creek if something's going down. So, you know, enough to be a support, enough to make sure we're all in the right path. If there are higher level discipline things, of course, I would handle those because that would be part of my duties. Again, it depends on.
Just don't know.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, you know, sometimes we'll get a teacher in there that's, you know, that's just like any teacher, it's very confident and able to handle a situation in their classroom. Sometimes you have a teacher that isn't as confident, a teacher that needs to train up or what have you. That's going to be another piece that'll decide exactly how much time I spend out there, but.
And I would say initially, he's going to be spending more time there until we can get everything running and everybody's feet under them to provide that support and then back off a little bit as it becomes appropriate.
Originally, the ALC was at the board office, right?
Yes.
In a class, one of the classrooms?
Yeah.
That's been how many years?
Oh, man. Carol Williams is still here. And then after I took this position, we started moving out to the schools. So I don't know, six years ago, maybe?
Now, is there any way we could go back to having that at the board office?
Board office at this point isn't really suited to have students in it. I mean, it's, and I don't think, you know, somebody's going to want to give up her office.
Let's get back to Leading Creek, though.
Yeah.
And I understand the logistics to it, but at the same point, it's not a reward. That may be a reward to those kids, I don't want to go out here every day. I'm going to get through this program, and I don't want to take this ride out 33 every day, and I'm going to get better, I'm going to get back to my classroom. So I think there's a two, there's a two-way street there for that, too.
And especially with elementary, I, you know.
Sure.
Definitely, because we are so limited in the space we have with the other schools.
Yeah.
Now, you know, with elementary, though, even though they won't be engaging with the class they're going back to, which, you know, that's going to be, unless we have four of them for elementary, that's not going to work out anyhow unless they are, you know, from that school. But they'd still be able to, you know, they call them for the little ones specials. So the music and the art or what have you, and kind of ease them into. And it seems almost counterintuitive to put them in those classes earlier, but a lot of times, those classes have lowered expectations for just pure brain power. It's kind of that pressure valve, and sometimes that's useful for a kid, even though it seems more rewarding than it does helping. But, you know, it's one of those things, every kid's different, every teacher's different.
I have one more. So just hypothetically, if we go to Leading Creek, how do those kids interact or with the other kids that are out there, are they kept separate? I mean, at all times, lunches, I mean, just how does that work? Or how would you, I mean, I'm afraid, how would you envision it work?
Again, it would vary by student, because some students are, you know, successful in the lunchroom. So, you know, there's no reason to keep them out of the lunchroom if they do well in that setting. Some of them, you know, wouldn't have to be, you know, completely separated. But all based on the kid, what they're good at, what they're not good at, what they're comfortable with, what they're not comfortable with.
It's a difficult task at best.
Yep.
I like that we're progressing, I love that we're posting it. Find the right person, find the best place we can work with, in the right direction.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Consider and approve the student affiliation agreement between West Virginia Board of Governors on behalf of West University and the School of Nursing and Lewis County Board of Education, effective December 4th, 2024 through December 4th, 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion approves. No minister approve, okay. Send agenda. Jennifer Eiler, chaperone for JROTC trip Dayton, Ohio, December 6th, 2024. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Policy. Policy 3120.12, substitutes in areas of critical needs and shortages. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
What does this entail?
This is identifying areas that we are struggling to get teachers in as areas of critical need so that we can have folks that are retired and so forth come back and fill in those.
So what areas are critical need now?
We are defining all of them.
We're defining them all now, that's what, this is what this will do? That's what you've been talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, to me, it's a critical.
I agree with you, you brought up.
If you can't get an art teacher, it's a critical need because you haven't had an art teacher.
You brought it up, I assume you're exactly right, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve payroll and bills. An amount of?
Make a motion.
I'll second. Any, any discussion?
Yes, there were a couple of questions about the money that Ms. Richards moved to the investment. So I was going to allow her to share where that money came from.
Yes, so I just transferred that from our regular checking account. Just moved it over so I can actually.
But they're asking where did that money come from?
Where did that money originate?
The, it's property tax, so.
So it was an increase?
Yes, yeah.
And money that we were owed?
Yeah, we got like, probably like $3 million.
Paying that $3 million, where did you put it?
I put it in our investment account right now, so then there is like this.
When was it owed from?
Yes.
That's that Marcellus Shell money that they.
So this is what we expected, basically, the first, the first of the, the extra money that's basically on the excess levy side between now and June 33rd.
This is what they've sent us as of all month of 15.
Is that for the first quarter or for the fourth quarter?
Um, a little bit of the first quarter.
Expected that it goes to?
I wouldn't expect the payout to stay at that level. It's probably going to go down, it'd be probably a lot more, or I'm saying about for the rest of the year.
It's basically paid, paid to us based on what property tax collections are. So obviously, before the discount period, there'll be more, and before the discount period in second half.
You'll have more of an increase in September.
But, but the estimate will be close unless I'm missing something.
When was that estimate, when did that estimate come out?
I don't know. You know, March or something. When did the assessor's office make in the state tax form, make us where?
I think it was like March, it was like spring, it was spring.
Anything further?
I like the idea of transferring part of that into that state investment fund, because the interest rate's pretty good.
It's really good.
We might as well make money off of it, you know, while sitting there.
The good thing about that, that state fund is you have easy access to it.
Yeah, you can be.
Punishment stipulation.
So it's less.
If you do move money out of there, is there any penalty?
4.75%.
That's good.
So all of us earnings from about $5,000 to, I put in three more, $3 million, so we're looking at about $25,000. Just been in.
On top of those, one we saw on the report.
Another?
Yeah.
Good?
Thank you.
Good.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Anything on Ryan's behalf?
Yes, Mr. Dumont could not be here, he's a little under the weather tonight. He asked me to share with you that after our visit at Roanoke, he had a quote gathered for new cafeteria tables. They're going to total about $44,000 to replace those. So we can't move forward with that right now because the amount of money, it'll have to be bid out. So he's, he's looking at that. He also said that he had another company here today at Bland looking at the roof and was hoping to secure a quote from them by the end of the week.
I have one thing on there, and I'm sure Ryan's on top of it, though. But I just want to stress how, how important it is to check these doors at all the schools. I came across one open this weekend when I had basketball practice. And I'm not sure who was in the classroom, nor do I care, but I could walk in without the key. So I just, and, and I'm not saying somebody necessarily left it unlocked, it's got, might have had an issue or something, so.
One of our schools or whatever, outside?
Into the gym. I had basketball practice on one of Fox Sunday, and I could walk, walk right into the, to the gym. And I didn't know who it was, I mean, it looked like there was a trash bag outside, sitting outside. I didn't know who might, might have been inside, but I don't necessarily think it was, it could have been somebody not shutting the door, but the doors, the doors are tough, that back door's tough, it doesn't shut very well. So we just need to make an effort to, I'm talking in every school, that, that needs to be a priority that we make sure those things lock, that's all.
Mrs. Radcliffe, what's, which door was that?
The door I, the door they send me to, so, so, Lewis County youth league basketball uses a gym on Saturday and Sunday to practice. So I practiced on Sunday at 1:00.
So was it the doors that are on the?
Going down the, down the, down the pathway, down the.
The ramp?
Yeah, the, the main door I go into for going to the ballgame. And there was like a white trash bag, and I was, I felt bad because I liked to pick it up, but I didn't have gloves to pick it up. You know what I mean, so I don't know who was back in there.
And you said that was on a Saturday?
That was Sunday at 1:00, I got there about 12:45.
Were you the first little league person to get in?
I was, yeah. So I was, I was the first person to get in there, it's definitely not the youth league, no matter what you're thinking there, Mrs. Radcliffe.
No, I was, they might have brought that in.
And the other thing is, the door, the chain door that went in when we go to, to use it is locked every time. So we have to have a kid reach up underneath and unlock it so we can get in the, so we can get into practice, so. But, but I just want to check the door, that's all, just, just make sure the doors are working properly. I mean, I think that's more important for Monday to Friday from 7:00 to 3:00 than it is on the weekend.
What is our policy as far as door checks? The school resource officer here, does he periodically throughout the day go out and do door checks?
Our custodians do it as well, when they go out to the, when they go out to the hopper, they'll check. They walk around in the morning, they walk around in the morning before the school, whole school day starts. They do, they've already done about two perimeter checks already, it's due to school right now. And then before the last custodian leaves, they go.
I just want to make sure they're operating properly, I, I think people are checking them. I just don't want, I just want to make sure they're not broken, because a couple of them are, you know, a couple of entrances are.
Need new doors, is that what you're saying?
Mine, need some spots. That's what I'm saying.
I have, I have.
Would you have Mr. Dumont look at that door to see if it seems to be an issue? Anything else? Mrs. Mace?
I was told sweet, short, and sweet. Been around being all you know. Sweet part maybe not so much, but the short part, I got that covered. I am not going to read you, you guys can all read, I'll give you mine when I'm ready. Just some of the things I do, I'm not going to give you a list of everything I do, I'm your personnel director. I'm also a middle school supervisor, I've done both of those for personnel now, I'm on nine and a half years, I've been a middle school supervisor. I think Frontline was supposed to ease the application process, I think it may have eased it on the applicant process. It definitely hasn't eased it on the central office process. It takes me two days to do job postings, where it used to take the secretary half the day to do them, but now I'm doing them. The process of receiving those applications is always interesting, and I always be sure to let Dr. Stewart know when we find a, something wonky, as I call it. We have people's names who apply that didn't apply, Mr. Bush's name might appear on the job applicant, or my colleague uses, no, I absolutely did not apply, or Mr. Giszi may have applied for a job, but his name doesn't show up. And those are calls I make immediately to Charleston saying, hey, I need help, I don't know how this happened. Which is a little scary to me, because if Mr. Giszi applies for a job and his name doesn't show up on our end, that could be a mistake on us, so. I don't know how we correct it, I voice my opinion and my concern every time, this happens with Frontline in Charleston, so they kind of see our number on the front screen, I'm sure they go, oh, she's calling again. Yes, she's calling again because there's a problem, somebody needs to fix it. So if you hear anything about Frontline, and it's wonderful, it's great it is for the applicant, but it is not so much for us, and I don't know what the solution to that is. I know Dr. Stewart has spoken with other superintendents in the state, they are just having the same issues that we do. They're seeing the same type of problem, so it's not just us. She came from another county where they had used Frontline before and they had some of the same issues. So we're still receiving and processing applications, we still receive and process retirements and resignations. The biggest, most stressful part of this job comes in the whole personnel season, and most of you have been through that. That is coming up in the spring, it is never a fun time when you have to reduce someone's job or transfer them. That seems to be the biggest issue, when you have to put somebody on transfer from one school to another. We will be having that meeting in March, so you'll be sitting and hearing from me then, and that's never a fun, it's never a fun task to have to do that to an employee. I said it is some discipline issues, I said it, and grievances as well, levels one through three. As a middle school supervisor, I speak with Ms. Radcliffe pretty frequently. She knows I'm just a call away, my job is not to run the middle school, my job is to offer her advice. If I wanted to run the middle school, I would apply to be the middle school supervisor. I don't feel that that's my role, I'm here to stay and help her. Also, work with mentors when we can get them for people that are new to our system. We offer mentors to maybe experienced people that come from another county. We do things a little differently. We also are required to offer them to any new personnel as part of their certification as they have a mentor. I am slowly, it's just the process is starting, probably after Christmas break with Mr. Radcliffe, to policies will not be coming under my umbrella, so that is something new for me. If that was short enough, do you all have any questions on what I do or anything about my job?
I was going to ask about policies, because that's going to be quite painful, isn't it?
I don't know, I don't really know what I'm getting myself into, it can't be worse than roofing transfers.
I just didn't know if we were, I don't know how it goes, with each year, we have to be compliant with whatever policy and what type of, you know, what, what kind of catch-up we may or may not have to do. I just didn't know how, how you felt like that was going to go.
Take it on one at a time.
Okay.
That's all you can do.
That's right.
Any other questions for me?
If I'm a teacher and I'm coming to you, Mrs. Mace, how do you sell our county?
Are you one of our teachers or are you a new?
If I'm a new teacher coming out, I just did my student teaching, and there's a fourth grade job somewhere and I'm interested. How is it, let me, let me preface that a little bit, how can we as a board help you to retain or attract more people?
I think you're already starting down the right process, you started offering more benefits to our people. I do think that's a big plus, we didn't have that as an option before. You know, salary increases always are going to help because they can go next door to Harrison County and make quite a bit more than we offer them here.
Mr. Roy, you were telling me about the number of people in student teaching. What was your?
Yes, just.
The numbers I have aren't good.
I talked to, talked to Fairmont State, they had 14 student teachers coming out. Tulombo State had 14. Tululeah State had fourteen. West Virginia, Westland had three. Think they'll have six or seven next year. So, and then eighty elementary student teachers through WU, four counties. Some of them are Lewis County kids. Can we reach out to those kids right now and talk to them?
As student teachers?
Yeah.
That we go through their college and university to place them.
That'd be good though, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and when they do offer to bring someone, we jump on it immediately, and even with nurses. We recently did that with a student, I don't know what you call it. I call it a student teaching nurse.
So we try to get out in front of them?
We'd like to.
Yeah, we have to.
And anybody that wants to come home, and we can grab them, we grab them as soon as we can, as long as we can.
Because we've got about fifteen full-time vacancies, don't we?
We do. Some of them have been there for several years.
And how does that compare to other counties? Do we know?
I honestly don't spend my time trying to look at what other counties have as vacancies. I gotta worry about our own, and ours are.
So?
I don't know what we do with the ones we have, let alone what someone else does in their own county.
So, so, so how many?
I think there were seventeen hundred at the beginning of school, in the state of West Virginia.
How many of the long-term subs do we have in Lewis County?
Posted or hired?
Hired. Get approximately?
Five.
About five.
And I think we have three more that are posted that have gone unfilled, or a considerable amount.
And the subjects, classes, the classes, subjects, what are they? I mean, you might not know off your head.
Special ed is one, English is one. We have one in math, we have one in science at the high school.
So it's just not what we would typically think and the legislature would think and the state department would think is.
Well, I think you go back and look at our critical need list. We have gone from two or three areas to now including every area that is a teaching area in our county. Did you ever dream that, Mr. Bush, nineteen seventy-four? Ever dreamed it would be short in elementary school teachers?
Eighteen applicants for the job I got.
Undoubtedly, and now we can't get one. Seventh and eighth middle school social studies position has been posted for two years. And if we do have, if we do have a qualified applicant and they've been interviewed, they've ended up going somewhere else.
That's, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Incentives.
Can we not do anything outside the box, a headhunter's and indeed, or something like that, to try to attract people? I understand you've got state vacancies put up there, but is there any other alternative we could use to try outside the box to?
We just signed up for a D and E education employment expo. We're gonna try that.
Yeah.
Something I've never done, so we're gonna try it and see if it's worth the time and effort.
I think seeing the face at those schools will help you, yeah.
We have our fingers crossed it's in February. If anybody wants to go with me, I'll send you the date. You can come along, sit at our table. You can be the smiling face of Lewis County schools.
How many, sir, personnel vacancies do we have?
They don't normally go unfilled very long. Occasionally you will have one posted more than once, but not as often as you do a professional position.
We likely will struggle with the aid situation, because we are going to be putting third grades, ECAT aids in third grade.
The success aids that we've done first and second grade. Next year we'll be adding third grade. I think that's about seven or eight.
Yes.
So I think seven or eight of our employees should be moving jobs. Seven or eight people off the sub list that are, right now we don't have seven or eight substitute payments.
So going forward, anything that we can do as a board to improve benefits, any kind of leverage we can get to put us on a level place would be a big benefit to.
Absolutely.
To our temp, to our employees right now, as well as people coming in, that would help.
Absolutely, certainly. If you're looking at a benefits package for any job, you're gonna go where you get the most, especially if you, you know, I can't say just young persons, for anyone.
I got one more that kind of dovetails into that a little bit, so. So you talked a little bit about Harrison County paying more and other counties, other counties paying.
They do.
I don't know, for a fact Harrison County pays more, because as you know, I have one there. How do they pay more? Is it because they, I mean, we're all on a state scale. Is it because they, they have money in their, in their levy or?
I'm assuming it's mostly from their taxes. Their tax base is much larger than ours.
Right, just because it's fair, so they.
And they have industry where we don't.
But, so.
Inwood Station brings them millions of dollars a year.
Okay, I get that, but, so, they're.
But they also build supplements into their levies.
That, that's what I wanted to know. That's why I'm trying to get at. So they have, they have built something that we don't actually have.
They can afford it.
We have supplement in our levy.
Yes.
It's not as much.
Just not as much in the levy. So, so if we chose to, and I'm sorry, this probably gets out of your, it's in your realm a little bit, but. So if we chose to, we could actually add more money into the supplement with extra money that we have? That's an informative question. Does that make sense to you? Or, or no?
In addition to the levy call that was just passed, is that what you're?
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm getting at, because, because obviously we're gonna, we're gonna get more money than we probably expected when we did the levy call. And I don't, and maybe I don't need an answer today. Maybe it's something that we need to, need to look at, because I don't know what you can do with supplements, but.
But that's already earmarked.
But when you can go, when you can go across the, across the border and, and.
Twenty minutes around at the interstate.
And make, I mean, it's a good chunk of change more. I mean, you know, I had a son because he wants to, wants to coach football. Come here and probably make an eight to ten thousand dollars less, just on the coaching front. Just on the coaching front, just because he wants to coach. It's that, it's that big a difference. And it's also, it was also a pretty significant difference in teaching, so.
Several thousand.
You know, we're, so, so what I'm getting at is, they're gonna look there first. You know, look there. People can drive out seventy-nine. I drive there to eat every night, about half the time. You know, people can drive that pretty easily, pretty easily is what I'm saying, so. So Johnny's right, we gotta think outside the box somehow to, to try to.
To try to get ahead of that.
Yeah, try to get ahead of that.
What's the biggest thing you think could help, Miss?
Oh, salaries, I think is the biggest, but I don't know how we deal with it on money. The other thing is the benefit package, and you guys have already addressed that. You know, you made some changes to that already this year, and that is helpful. That is another carrot, the benefit for you, you know, the dental. And insurance, that's a big for people. So, I mean, you're on the right path.
What's a teacher make when they fill in and take somebody else's position, like, they're, they're filling in for a subject on just one day, filling in for somebody that's gone?
On their planning period.
On their planning period.
Cover for a teacher.
What do they make?
They get their daily rate, like, one eighth of their daily rate? Or one seventh, depending on how many classes they teach a day. If they're an eight-period day or a seven-period day, is that how it works?
If they're an eight-period day teacher, what do they get?
It's based on their salary.
Okay.
And their years of experience in education.
What's the number then, taking somebody, a teacher making forty?
For instance, I'd say most of them are between, you know, twenty-five to thirty dollars.
And at the same time, I think, you and I talked about in Harrison County, it's seventy-five dollars.
Something like that.
So is that something we can?
For one class period to cover?
Yeah.
That would be a nice incentive.
That's what I'm getting at.
Help us with our sub shortage?
Sure.
Teachers will cover it or not?
I don't know if it would help with the sub shortages, but it definitely would help if you're talking to that building principal back there, getting people willing to, because some people are burnt out on doing that, because we've been short people for several years of this. And teachers are tired of giving up their planning periods. But we also have extracurricular jobs that are posted that have much more salaries to them than they had a couple of years ago, and people just aren't applying for the biggest. They still seem to be tired from COVID, is what I've been told, though it was four years ago.
If somebody is looking for, to say, whatever, whatever job it might be, and they're, they have questions, do you prefer if we refer them to you or Mrs. Butcher, what's, what's the best avenue?
And if, if Mrs. Butcher, they go to her and she can't answer, or she feels uncomfortable, she'll send them to me.
Okay.
But by all means, both of us are there. That's our job, is to be there. It's customer service. You know, emails, phone calls. If we don't answer, leave a message. Somebody will get back to them. But absolutely, please send them our way. We'd much rather field those questions than somebody give them answers that maybe aren't quite right.
The background checks, how long are those most, I know that's a, that's a loaded question.
Three days to six weeks. And there's no rhyme or reason as to why. It doesn't seem to make a difference if you go out here to Weston or you go to Clarksville or Kingwood. And they will not release them electronically to us. We've had that argument for two years now. They are given electronically to the state departments, but they will not release them electronically to us. And unfortunately, that answer's terrible, three days to six weeks, but that is honest to business answer. Yours may come back on Friday. Yours may not be here until, you know, the middle of January.
You're right, that is terrible.
But they come, they come, they come straight to your own?
They, well, it depends on what they're getting. If it's their first time having a certificate, it has to go through the Department of Education. And that slows it down a little bit.
Right, okay.
And if they're having a federal background check versus a state background check, and what they're getting their background checked for, it all makes a difference as to how long it takes. You know, we've argued to try to use a different company. Unfortunately, this company that the state uses is Idemia. I was on the phone with Idemia for forty-five minutes today because there was a problem with our account, and it's still not fixed.
Do, do we have to use the one that the state recommends, or can you do?
It is the state company. We cannot use another one. Mr. Gissey had us check into that two years ago, and unfortunately, that is the company we are required to use. I wish we could just have the state police do it, because certainly they would have them back sometimes in a few hours, but for no longer allowed to do that. I think that was the practice in the past.
My next question. Thank you.
No, we've, we've tried to speed that process up and just take closed doors every time we do it. Anything else for me?
And that's probably your biggest setback first, getting somebody to where we're ready to hire them?
Yeah, we, we will hire people. You'll see them tonight, you know, pending background checks, and we do that, because, so, if you approve them, then as soon as we get their background checked, we can get them started to work. Versus waiting on that background check to come back. Well, we get it tomorrow. Well, now it's now the middle of January before they can come on an agenda to you and get approved to work. So that's why we kind of, I don't know if you want to look at that backwards, but we're trying to speed up the process as soon as we can get them in a school doing whatever job it is. We want to get them out there as soon as we can. That and also a service person's competency testing. We have issues with people that are scheduled to come take the competency exams for service jobs that don't show up, or they don't pass it.
Do they have anything else?
We can't do anything about, you know, they have to pass the test or we can't hire them.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel, I'd like to request an executive session regarding two A in our file. Do a motion to go into executive session.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Let the record reflect, it is six fifty-seven.
Do I have a motion to come out of the executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect no actions taken in the executive session. Now, the time is 7:58. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel portion of the agenda as read?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Superintendent updates.
Just a couple of things. Winter wishes occurred on Friday. It was a huge success. We had lots of families. We want to make sure that we thank our communities and school staff. Eastern Energy, who supplied the majority of the gifts and food for the staff. And Rotary, along with a lot of other donors, they gave money to Shop &amp; Save for hams and turkeys and those kinds of things. Our high school cheerleaders competed in the state tournament over the weekend. They placed fourth, which is a great accolade for them. For those of you that were not able to attend, the high school held their art and music showcase on Sunday. The arts and music programs in Lewis County are amazing. Grape feeder programs and the talent that we have in our schools is just unbelievable. Our kids impress me every time I hear them. The middle school, if you didn't get to come the other day, the middle school's having their concert tomorrow at 1:30 and then again at 7:00. And the last thing is that Mr. Dumont and I are headed to Charleston in the morning for the SBA presentation of projects. So we are hoping to come home with some good news.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Holden?
The Fred Eberly nurses graduation, which, you know, I did get to attend it. But I understand everything went real nice there for me. I don't think there was that many. How many nurses were there, do you know?
That's gonna be it.
But it was stooped. I'm not stooped. It was adult nurses. So, but I understand it went good. That's all I have.
Mr. White?
I did attend the winter festival of arts that Dr. Stewart just alluded to. You talk about the process. I attended Mrs. Heath at Peterson Central. I attended Mr. Loudon at Robert L. Blain. And then you see it all coming together at the high school. And our arts and our process and the whole progression is real, real, real good. And thank you to all the teachers involved in that. It's very impressive. Congratulations to the cheerleaders. They go out there shorthanded and finish fourth in the state. Did a great job. We're very proud of them.
Mr. Bush?
Just, I want to thank Robert L. Blain for having us. Thanks for the meal and the presentation. Love the enthusiasm here. Appreciate it.
Mr. Fay?
Yeah, I appreciate Robert L. Blain too. I think Mrs. Rackliff and her staff, no offense to the high school and elementary schools, they probably have the hardest job of any school in the county with the age group and number of students that we have in this building. It's the most difficult one. I loved what I was hearing about the attendance and the way they're handling discipline and the way numbers are getting better at this school. I know that this board, we probably owe you some help with the facilities. And I think we'll do the best we can to make sure that gets done. Otherwise, Merry Christmas to everybody.
I echo everybody's sentiments about the middle school. Great job. Arts, great job. And one other thing, I want to thank Dr. Stewart, Mr. Rackliff. I'm excited to hear this, see this ALC kick off. That's something that we've heard from the elementary to the middle school, to the high school. I think that's something everybody's been striving for. So it sounds to me like we may have the opportunity to get something in motion soon enough. So kudos to you guys.
I would like to thank the middle school for all your work. I forgot the first time. Thank you for all you've done and appreciate the food and everything and hospitality.
Next meeting, Doc.
January 13th at 6 o'clock at the administrative offices.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
Is Steve about coming in?
Probably can't get us all in there.
I have to go right back behind this pole, right?
No, you can't.